This meeting was precipitated with the article that Jim Kenny wrote on Sunday. He thought it was a great article. It really highlighted a lot of the deferred maintenance. Uh, the, the challenges that you are facing at the, at the parking authority. Uh, so uh, i- if you can kind of give the other counselors uh, who might not have seen that article or a rundown?
Sure, I see uh, Tim Sheehan joining in. Um, so he's, he's on the call. Uh, a little bit of history is uh, you know, we, Parking Authority used to be able to manage, you know, its repair needs. You know, five, six years ago, we were able to borrow money and invest in our facilities as much as we could have. Um, but two thousand eighteen MGM garage opened towards the fall. Uh, obviously, as you know, this thirty-two hundred spaces open to the public. We realized some net loss immediately after that. And then shortly after that was pandemic in twenty twenty. Folks were just working from home. Uh, our source of income is obviously parking. You get to come downtown, park in our facilities, events, transient. Um, you know, there, there was nothing happening, uh, no concerts, no games. So we, you know, were heavily impacted uh, with that pandemic as well. And then after that, uh, the Civic Center Garage in twenty twenty-one, I think. Um, you know, we couldn't afford to fix up the garage for fifty million dollars. We just didn't have the debt capacity. So that was sold to the state, along with that about thirty percent of our gross revenues. As a result, we find ourselves in a difficult situation with aging facilities built in nineteen eighties. Uh, and uh, you know, lack of revenue, lack of resources. And we're just struggling to figure out how we can fix up the facility so it's safe for our patients or city. So that's what we stand.
Well, I guess on that question, that'd be the, the, my first and foremost question. Uh, from the article, you know, the, the, some of those pictures were pretty dire. Uh, the condition of the, the facilities. Uh, is there a, a threat to the, the public safety uh, with some of these garages? I know that in New York City, there's a, a, a major issue with parking garages with electric vehicles, especially the Teslas are very heavy. Uh, and is, is there a threat at all uh, that uh, these garages might not be able to hold the capacity? Or the weight that they, that they should? Uh, I guess that would be the first question.
From my knowledge, not, not as of now. We had uh, our architect and engineers from Boston, Desmond Associates. They do uh, onsite walkthrough uh, time to time to give us sort of an estimate of what's pressing, what needs to be repaired. But they never, they never indicated to us that, you know, it is, it is dangerous for folks to park, so we should shut it down. So we haven't gotten there yet.
Who, what, what, what's the stories on our garage? Like, how, how high are these garages? What's that, that we are?
How high?
Yeah, story, like three stories, four stories.
The, the ninety-one north and south are under the highway, so we have a deck right below the highway and then ground level. So those are two stories. And that is, that is our responsibility, construction and maintenance, it's not the state's. Um, Columbus Center Garage, six stories where we are, uh, where City Stage is. And Taylor is five stories. Taylor Street supports those Silver Brick Apartments and others. It's five-story building.
And so Desmond and Desmond Associates is the civil engineer that we work with, the Parking Authority. And so they, I mean, ha- has there been like, ha- have they specifically looked at the structural integrity of it? And they're, they're, they've given us uh, uh, a sign off on it, uh, essentially, is that?
That's correct. They have, they, they're uh, you know, repair needs assessment time to time. We call them in when we feel that we have noticed some other, you know, um, uh, sections of the garage that may need to be looked at. So they're under contract. We call them in every two to three months just to do a walkthrough.
And just out of uh, uh, curiosity, eh, what is in the po- the Parking Authority world, the, the, this new issue? Of these electric vehicles coming in and adding weight and collapsing these garages? What, what, what is this? Uh, that, you know, is that, guys, is that on anyone's radar? I mean, I ju- I see it in, uh, I mean, in the New York Post a lot. But uh, i- i- does that come to your attention or is, have you got warnings on that or anything like that?
Uh, nothing for us as of now, but I think we have to be prepared moving forward, of course.
Okay. Uh, and for everyone's education on the line, we have uh, WLP twenty-two news. And we also have Jeanette DeFort from the Republican here uh, in City Hall uh, online as well. I, I guess um, a good place to start, um, in total, uh, from the Jim Kenny article. There's about seventeen million dollars of deferred maintenance. I guess how much money was requested out of the hundred and twenty-three million dollars uh, for ARPA funds? Uh, for the Parking Authority. I would assume that uh, the fact that uh, the Parking Authority uh, caters to downtown businesses. And was so affected by the pandemic, uh, we would be eligible. How much did the Parking Authority request from ARPA? And how much did the Parking Authority receive in terms of ARPA funding? Uh, out of the hundred and twenty-three million dollars of funds?
The, the former CFO TJ Plant and I had a discussion. Uh, when the ARPA was announced and I was reaching out for some guidance on how we could go to the state or even federal government. To see if we may be eligible. As you know, we're not a department of the city. We're independent. So we're responsible for raising our own money for repair needs, ru- uh, revenues. Um, and TJ had mentioned that, hey, send us uh, you know, what you have for, you know, repair assessment needs from Desmond. And we'll see if we can figure something out.
And so did you apply for ARPA funds to the city?
I, I wasn't asked to apply, uh, because he was looking at us as a sort of like an interdepartment. Asked me to just share some of the reports that I had received from Desmond.
Yeah. Well, the Springfield Housing Authority did receive ARPA funds, but so, so you, you did not, so to be clear, you didn't, you didn't apply for any ARPA funds whatsoever?
I wasn't asked to apply formally, um, so I did not. I was asked to just send over the repair needs that we had, sort of the, the reports that we get from Desmond. Um, so I had sent that to him.
But you wouldn't need to ask. I mean, you could have just applied, right? Or, or how did that work? I mean, why would you need to be asked?
I wasn't, I, I wasn't familiar with the process. Uh, I didn't, I, I was asking him at that time. Whether I needed to actually go to the formal RFP process. And he had indicated that, you know, you're, you know, sort of an interdepartment of the city, just send me what you have from Desmond for repairs. And we'll see if we can figure something out.
When did, when did you come on as the executive director?
Uh, towards the middle of twenty twenty-one.
And previous to you, the executive director was who?
Uh, Tony Thomas Moore was the interim before me and Mary McNelly, as you know, was prior to him.
It wasn't, and Tom Moore was in charge of the ARPA funds in the city. Did, did he reach out at all and say, you should, because, and he would have an understanding of the deferred maintenance? Did he reach out and say, perhaps we could have five million dollars in ARPA funds or did, uh, as he was uh, overseeing the, the distribution?
I, I don't recall if we had a conversation with him. I just thought I would go with that CFO because I had a relationship with TJ. Um, and I, I thought he was responsible overall, you know, for ARPA disbursements. I didn't reach out to him directly.
You didn't reach out to Tom Moore directly?
Correct.
Did Tom Moore reach out to you?
Uh, I, I don't think we had a, a direct, a discussion with Tom Moore about SPA's needs. But time to time, I'd reach out to Tom about, you know, where, uh, there was a contract with the city, let's say, that was uh, needed to be renewed. So I would reach out to him for some guidance on those, but I didn't discuss SPA's needs specifically with him.
Okay. I, uh, I guess another question in terms of the number, so we, we're seventeen million dollars and um. Deferred maintenance, when interest rates were about two percent in, in twenty-one, twenty-two, did we refinance any of our debt? Were we able to do that and take advantage of those rates uh, i- i- in any capacity? Or was there any discussion on that?
Uh, was that for me, counselor?
Yes.
Um, we, no, we did not, we borrowed money. Um, the last time was when, uh, I would say two thousand seventeen. About four percent flat rate for some repairs of the Civic Center Garage. Um, but we did not, I'm sorry.
We, we did not refinance?
Uh, we, we refinanced and we borrowed two more times following that for repairs to the Civic Center Garage when we owned it. But after that, we did not borrow any more money, even when the interest rates are low for repairs.
Was there any discussion on, perhaps that would be an opportune time to take out some funds?
Thought about, we thought, we always thought about how to repay uh, those debts. Um, you know, we find ourselves in a situation where we don't have much, um, you know, net proceeds sitting around to be able to support the debt.
Yeah. Uh, a- as, as to the board, do you have, who's, who's on, who's on the Parking Authority uh, uh, board, Bakul? I'm not actually familiar with that, but the names are, who, who would be the individuals on the board?
Thomas Lot is our chairman. Freedom Malone is the vice chair. Fernando Mendoza, member. Maurice Nichols, member. And Paul Fenoff, member.
Are, are any of those individuals uh, in the finance world or bankers or anything like that? In terms of, obviously, the challenge you have is financing here. Uh, so do we have any expertise in the board in terms of uh, maybe bankers? Or I, I don't know the backgrounds of those individuals, uh?
I, I think Tom, Thomas Lot used to work in, in a bank. I'm not sure whether he was in investments or mortgage. Not very sure, but he used to work in it.
And are you currently in any of the state bond bills for financing? There's a couple capital improvement bond bills that have passed through the Charlie Baker administration. Uh, do you have any, uh, or even Governor Neely's, uh, has a, some economic development bond bills? Uh, were there any requests or were there any earmarks placed in, on behalf of the Parking Authority?
Not, not to my knowledge. Um, I'm sort of reaching out to you and, and others, as you know, just to get some guidance on how and where we may be eligible for some funding. We have had, we have had meetings, uh, you know, with City Hall and um, Congressman Neal was very helpful in pointing us to the direction of. Pioneer Valley Planning Commission to see if we may be able to get some uh, funding from their regional uh, budget. Uh, there, there's a program called TIP. Um, uh, I think Transportation Improvement Program. Um, so we have had discussions with them. We're trying to find grants uh, that we may be eligible for. And once we determine which is more appropriate for us, then we would submit applications. And hopefully with assistance from Neal's office, Congressman Neal's office, that we may be able to get some funding. We're working on some, yeah.
Do, do you meet regularly with the state delegation? Like, when, when was your last time that you had a, a meeting with the delegation?
I did not meet with the delegation. I, uh, I recall visiting Congressman Neal's office last summer. And then I had two meetings with Pioneer Valley Planning Commission following that.
But uh, state senators and state representatives that represent Springfield, have you ever, you, you've never met with them?
Uh, no, I have not.
No. And, and previous to, to your tenure, do you ever meet with the, were there ever meetings with, with the state delegation at all?
The city, uh, yeah, a couple of city council, uh, councilors I have had mis- meetings were informal, uh, just sort of, you know, where can we start? Where can we go? Uh, but not, not with the state, I'm afraid.
Okay. And one, one other thing that was interesting in the article that was pointed out was we stole, so the Parking Authority owned City Stage. And we received three hundred thousand dollars to renovate City Stage. And we sold her for, how much did we sell it for?
The, the City Stage space is being sold for a million dollars. We have accepted the proposal. We haven't closed on it yet.
And what's, what's that building assessed at? And what's, what's the word?
The City Stage space was assessed uh, about nine hundred and seventy thousand dollars. The building itself was assessed about three million and a half, I think, a few years back.
So the, are, are we selling the entire building or there's just the City Stage space? We're, okay, yeah.
Just the City Stage space. We, we would continue to maintain our ownership of our offices, the garage and some other space around.
Understood. Uh, I, thank, thank you, Bakul, for uh, bringing this to our attention, bringing it to the, the, uh. The attention of the general public and uh, sitting for this uh, hearing. Uh, as, you know, the Parking Authority is absolutely vital for the economic renaissance for the city of Springfield. You can't go to small businesses or restaurants unless you have parking. And uh, you can't go to work, uh, through these law offices, the courthouse, or these uh, banks unless we have a parking uh, system. That is uh, on par with cities like Boston and Hartford and New York. Uh, so thanks for uh, pointing out. Uh, the, this uh, uh, unbeknownst to the council, seventeen million dollars in deferred debt. I, we have Tim Sheehan on the line, uh, and I guess, Tim, I guess the question I would have, with seventeen million dollars in deferred maintenance. It's certainly a, it's a, it's a big cookie that we gotta take a bite out of here. Um, how come we did not use any of the ARPA money uh, for this? This would seem to me prime time uh, use for ARPA money. It's coronavirus uh, related. It's economic development. It would get small businesses going again. And uh, obviously with these numbers. Uh, I think that would, it would have been a great use of it. We did use it for the par- uh, Housing Authority. Uh, wa- was there any overtures or any thought process to that? Was there maybe there's other grants besides ARPA? But ARPA was the simplest way to do it.
Counselor, uh, Bakul is correct, uh, in his assessment that uh, interdepartmental requests were, were handled by finance. Um, so that would have come through TJ uh, for the appropriation. I, I, I don't disagree with you. I think it would have been a very good use and certainly would have been eligible. Uh, in so much as, obviously, the Parking Authority was negatively impacted. Because of the decline in uh, uh, folks uh, coming to work. Um, so a lot of those monthly permits during COVID just disappeared because people weren't in the office. Um, but I, I did not handle the interdepartmentals, so that would be a question uh, for the finance department.
And that, you know, the, I guess glaring thing about it was, i- i- am I correct? The former Parking Authority Director was i- in, in part on the ARPA distribution team, uh, for some point. Wasn't he the chair?
He was the manager of the uh, ARPA funding. He was the director.
And, and the Parking Authority still did not receive any ARPA money. Um.
Well, I, I, it, to be clear though, I don't know, a- and I, I can't speak for Tom. Uh, but I, I don't know if the information that Bakul provided to TJ made its way to Tom. I don't know that.
If, if I could ask this, and I don't have knowledge of this, but I just, I am of, of the understanding, I may be incorrect. Uh, due to the stringent application uh, uh, of the ARPA and rightfully so, uh, request. There might be an opportunity for ARPA money to come back to the city of like, that would go unclaimed, maybe individuals decided not to pursue it or awarded it. Uh, i- i- am I accurate in that or am I inaccurate in that?
I, I think that has yet to be determined. Uh, we're going through a process now of reconciliation.
Yeah. So I guess I could make, just so we have something constructive coming out of this hearing. If there is a substantial amount of money that might be returned to the city or actually never claimed through ARPA because of the process. In the million dollar range, I would suppose, is there any possibility as you as Economic Development Director to kind of? Obviously, the application's never been made by the Parking Authority, but perhaps keep that in mind that we need to make this as an investment. Uh, if that comes back to the city. I don't know if it does, but.
We are, i- it, just to be clear, counselor, at, at this point, I, I should kind of give a little bit of background.
Sure.
My, my uh, involvement directly with the Parking Authority kind of started with the uh, the state. Purchase of the Civic Center Garage. Um, so I was directly involved with that. And then it kind of carried through um, in terms of understanding the problems associated with. The uh, parking decks under I ninety-one. And the state's lease was being held up relative to uh, renewal. Uh, so I got directly involved with that because obviously without those parking decks. Uh, and the revenue that is generated from them for the Parking Authority, we really don't have a Parking Authority if that goes away. Um, and i- so, you know, that was critically important to the cash flow uh, of the Parking Authority. We got that issue resolved. And then the question came back, and Bakul and I have been working on this in terms of the extension. Uh, we wanted to have a longer term extension of that lease with the state so that that revenue was assured for the Parking Authority. The, the state is saying back to us that, alt, and Bakul, correct me if I'm wrong on any of this. Um, the state is saying back to the Parking Authority, we need to see the plan in terms of the capital improvements that you're going to be making. To the decks before we engage with a long-term lease with the Parking Authority for those debts. Um, so that kind of precipitated the whole conversation that we've been having. Uh, relative to the administration, the congressman getting on the tip uh, list uh, a- and such. Um, but clearly, we are, you know, at this point, the administration recognizes that um. There, there needs to be close attention paid to um, the uh, deferred maintenance needs. And also, you know, kind of prioritizing those across the system. Uh, so that, you know, we're, we're strategically addressing the stuff that needs to be addressed in a timely manner.
And y- y- you actually recorded in the ARPA, but you brought up a great point there, uh, Tim. Uh, in terms of financing, I mean, how, how nimble is the Parking Authority able to refinance their debt or take out additional debt? Uh, again, you know, we missed, I mean, there was an opportunity when rates were at two percent, two and a half percent uh, to actually take on debt at a low rate. I mean, well, what is their ability to do so?
The, the, their bonding ability right now is very limited. Uh, in so much, it, because it all comes back to the revenue that's coming through the Parking Authority. So, you know, for example, if, if you were to finance five million dollars worth of improvements. Uh, to the system overall, i- the Parking Authority as a standalone entity can't do that. Because it's not going to be able to show the, the revenue sources for the repayment of that. Um, so, you know, i- 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 if we're looking at borrowing and bonding. We need to be looking at new revenue sources coming into the Parking Authority to, to cover uh, that, the, the debt expense. Um, you're absolutely right, you know, in terms of the uh, the lower interest rates uh, that were. Uh, uh, all through COVID, uh, would have been an ideal time to do that. But the cash flow for the, the Parking Authority just would not have gotten approved by the uh, the lenders.
Um, you also brought another point that I never really thought of, uh, that we still have those old-fashioned parking meters where you put the quarter in and uh. And uh, and this is a little bit, yeah, uh, a, a different issue. But the, the old-fashioned uh, parking meters rather than the modern ones where you can pay through the iPhone, uh, Bakul, maybe you can jump in.
Yeah, I can answer that i- i- in terms of, I put it into the, the, the article. Um, Bakul and I go back and forth on this a bit. Um, you know, the, the, the authority does have the app. I, I, as a user, kind of think there's some challenges with that app. And, you know, if you run into the challenge with the app, there's no other alternative for you to, to use that has technology. Uh, besides using the old meter and trying to find a quarter. Um, you know, I, I, I think i- there's other issues associated with technology that, you know. Uh, clearly, i- i- if we're looking at the, the Parking Authority uh, as a s- system-wide. Uh, uh, there could be some significant updates in terms of technology.
Yeah. J- just to, may I, may I add to that just for us, uh, just thirty seconds? We, we did try some smart meters as a pilot program that folks could pay with their credit cards. In addition to uh, cash, of course, and passport parking would also work on those meters. And it turned out that after paying the convenience fees for credit card processing, et cetera, we're actually losing money. Our rates are so low, fifty cents an hour, um, compared to some other benchmark communities where it's a dollar, maybe more. It just didn't work out. We tried that for about two years. So now we're back to the old meters that we owned. Uh, own and then obviously passport app, which is, which is helpful, but I, I agree with Tim. We need to educate. Our users more on the convenience of it. Uh, hopefully, it'll be better utilized in the future. We, we did, we did a video last summer. It's on our website that shows folks how that is downloaded, how you can use it. How you could control times if you're running late in a meeting instead of running back to the meter and putting another quarter in. Um, so we're working on it.
Okay, I have other colleagues here on the line. I see uh, LeVar, I see uh, Jose Delgado, I see Maria. I don't know if my other colleagues uh, online wish just to chime in on uh, any of the hearing that we've heard thus far.
Well, um.
Maria?
Yep. Hi, everyone. So I am a little puzzled, concerned. Because I hear, hear the language of assisting through the ARPA money. So if we look to assist with part of the seventeen million dollars from ARPA. How would affect the community as a whole when it comes to the service deliveries? And I'm just putting that out there as a caution. I mean, being an independent business, probably, um, what I'm hearing is that. Um, we are looking to assist from an independent business. But I am cautioned about, because there's so many needs when it comes to the ARPA money that, um. I don't know what involvement the state would have in all this. And but what I hear by Tim right now is not as much. As assisting, but being sustainable, one, um, the business is assisted. So I just wanted to put that out there.
Uh, for clarification, Maria, that, uh, the ARPA was a point I was made, we had a hundred and tw- at the, originally, when we were allotted uh. By the federal government through the work of Congressman Neal, the hundred and twenty-three million dollars in federal money. My question was, why didn't the Parking Authority apply for it? The Parking Authority didn't apply. And secondly, why didn't the, the, the managers of the ARPA funds reach out to the Parking Authority? Because that, that, in my opinion, would have been a great use of ARPA money as it would fit all the categories that ARPA is trying to solve. That money's not spent, so we can't go back to ARPA. But my question was, why wasn't, you know, what, did we apply for it? The answer was no. Uh, did the Parking Authority apply for it? The answer was no. Did the city reach out? The, uh, the Parking Authority, it had worked with this deferred ma- maintenance issue. The answer was no. And my question was, why wasn't that done? It would appear to me that would be the prime time opportunity to address some of these problems. As deferred maintenance on a six-story parking garage could really lead to a public uh, safety situation. But the ARPA funding is gone now. But the question was simply, did we apply for, did the Parking Authority apply for it? And the answer was negative.
Oh, yes. And thank you for the explanation because I don't want the community to be confused. You know what I'm saying? From the objective perspective, thank you so much.
Uh, we have uh, Jose Delgado. I see you up there i- in your office space, uh, Jose. How, how are you?
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chair, and uh, thank you, Bakul and, and Tim for coming on, explaining to me, explaining this uh, issue. Uh, I, I have a few questions uh, to start off with. Um, and I apologize if you guys already mentioned this in the beginning because I came on a little late. Uh, how many garages do, does the SPA currently um, have and where?
We lease the ninety-one north and south. Uh, south one is close to the courthouse. Uh, north one is closer to the Tower Square. Uh, we own Columbus Center Garage where City Stage used to be. And Taylor Street Garage, I think it's thirty-nine Taylor Street, uh, right by the Silver Brick Apartments. And then we have a couple of smaller lots. Dwight's Lot across from three fifty, um, corner of Dwight and Worthington. Uh, Aprimont, in the Aprimont Triangle there. And then uh, Morgan Square Lot, there's a small lot across from the Taylor Street Garage. So that's all we own.
And what are the, I guess, what are the like occupancy levels of those garages? I'm assuming they're all different. I mean, are there some that are, you know, not being utilized as much?
Uh, yes, north and south are not being utilized as much. A lot of the folks in these towers and of Monarch and Tower Square are still working from home. Those used to be very, very busy. They're not as much. Columbus, we're fortunately busy. Um, with this fifteen fifty building here, Main Street Building, and some folks working in the Tower Square are utilizing that. Uh, Taylor Street, thanks to the residential buildings there, we're busy there as well. Uh, and Dwight Street is almost full occupancy now, again.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm just trying to get like an assessment. I, obviously, I know that the Civic Center Garage um, that was taken offline. So I was curious if, if that's giving you guys a little bump. Because I did see in the article that fiscal year twenty twenty-two, you guys saw a little bump. Any, any reasoning or anything that you know of why that bump occurred?
Twenty twenty slight bump, I, I would say folks are comfortable now to return to the offices. Uh, at one point, you can imagine Tower Square was dark, about ten percent of the folks were working in the buildings. Everybody was home. I think a lot of people have returned to the offices since then, so that's what it is. And I think also there are some events. Symphony Hall and others are holding events before events are offline as well.
And do you have any reason to believe that you're going to continue to see somewhat of an increase because folks are coming back?
I'm cautiously optimistic, uh, because Civic Center at some point will be online again. And that's, that's a great location for people to park and close to uh, MCC, obviously. But I think at some point, folks are going to be comfortable. They feel that, you know, um, going to the office is probably the way to go. But again, some people enjoy the flexibility at home. Um, so I am, I'm optimistic, but I'm cautiously optimistic, yes.
And then, uh, then I, I don't know if it's for you or for Tim, I did see. And, and thank you, Sean, because I hadn't seen the article, so thank you for mentioning that. Um, I saw there that there were some applications for community mitigation funds. Uh, because I know that some, a lot of this impact, you know, was stated, uh, due to the opening of MGM and, and their garage that's free. Um, and I saw a bunch of one point five million dollar grants. What are those grants being used towards?
So eh, the, as the council knows, um, we're advancing with a redevelopment effort on, uh. South Main Street, south of State Street. Um, and obviously with the scale of that development, there's a, a need for additional parking spaces. Um, and also the structure that the, um, Civic Center. Uh, the replacement of the Civic Center Garage, that didn't provide all the parking capacity back that the previous garage had. Uh, by three hundred and something spaces. And as many of the counselors know that eh, are in that area. Uh, in terms of South Main Street going all the way down to Union, um, the parking situation is abominable. Um, and there's clearly a need to, to bring some organization to, um, that parking relative to. Uh, some type of, uh, uh, more efficient layout and, uh, structure to it. And that's what the mitigation funding is looking at. So that, you know, my intent with that, and this is a longer term. Uh, uh, situation is that the SPA would ultimately own and manage that, that facility. And, uh, that would add back in, uh, the first phase of that would be three hundred. Like three hundred and fifty plus spaces back to the inventory that the parking authority has lost.
Okay. And so that's, I mean, I agree with you on the South End situation and, and a lot of those dollars and I'm. Because I know back in the day, uh, you know, the Community Mitigation Fund, when the commission was trying to put out, there wasn't as many. Um, I guess, applications. And so I know they're, they've been a little creative in some of those awarding of grants. And so. I guess I'm, I'm hoping, are there opportunities to help? Because we, we're talking about adding on, um, so will there be a shift away from some parking garages or leases? Or are we just adding up with still kind of the situation that we have? I guess what's the long?
I think one of the issues that we need to, eh, eh, in, uh, Councilor Kern kind of hit on it. Is kind of focusing on, you know, here's the problem, what are the, the, what's the, the, the solution plan? Um, and I think, you know, that's gonna take a variety of different resources coming to the table. Uh, and exploration of, you know, parking authority, uh, 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 policy. Um, you know, uh, eh, Springfield stops, uh. Um, pay for parking at, you know, an early hour in the evening. Um, and eh, eh, you know, is there, is there ways that, are there? Extension of hours that we could be looking at? Have we efficiently looked at, you know, uh, having on-street parking? Uh, in all the areas of the downtown, uh, uh, so that we're maximizing, you know, that, that on-street real estate. Um, you know, I think those are all, you know, issues that we need to be looking at going into, you know, trying to figure out. The resources that can come into the authority to solve for the seventeen million dollar problem. But as I said. I think that there's short-term issues as well that we really need to find the resources to begin to, um. Address such as the, uh, the parking decks, which is really a pressing issue, uh, with the state at this point. And, uh. I know in my conversations with the mayor, you know, we, we are committed to, to trying to, uh. Figure out a solution to that immediate problem as we're looking at the longer term, uh, resolution of the deferred maintenance.
Well, thank you. Uh, no, no further questions from me, Chair.
Tim, the, the mayor does have appointing authority on the parking board, though. Am I correct on that? That's who points? So eh, is there any thought? I mean, we have the Springfield Business Improvement District, we have the Springfield Chamber of Commerce, we have the Economic Development. Uh, Council of Western Massachusetts, we have developed Springfield, we have MGM, we have a myriad of banks as well as real estate. Uh, uh, attorneys who are in finance. I, i- is there any thought perhaps getting, I mean, the, the issue here is, is. You've got seventeen million dollars of, uh, deferred maintenance and debt. To get somebody with that kind of expertise to serve on the board, so that, that when interest rates hit two, two and a half percent, the, the, the bell goes off and. They, eh, that, those individuals can say, all right, now, now's the time to pu- uh, pull the trigger and act. Uh, is, is there anyone in that realm, in that sphere of, uh, the business community that? We could reach out to and ask to serve on the board because it seems like we have a, a financing issue and we need a financing, uh. Uh, an individual of very strong finance background to serve. And I think there are individuals in the bu- business community that would serve if asked or called upon and. Has there thought, uh, any thought given to that?
I, I would agree with you that there are folks that, you know, would respond to a request to serve, um, years ago. Um, i- i- it's kind of interesting, eh, we're taking this somewhat full circle. Um, the, the parking authority used to have, uh, bondholders, local bondholders. Uh, and just about every bank and Mass Mutual were a holder of the bonds. And then, uh, those bondholders would, uh, have, uh, quarterly meetings. With the parking authority to review the, the finances of the parking authority. Um, eh, because they ultimately were the ones that were holding the debt. Um, so there was a, a, a very high degree of accountability back to the bondholders. On the perform, the financial performance of the, the parking authority. Um, you know, I, I, I don't know if it's, you know, necessarily serving on the board or if it's some type of oversight. Um, you know, that somebody is coming in and offering, you know, insight from a financial perspective. Uh, but, uh, uh, I, I, I think we're open to, you know, all. Uh, uh, avenues of, uh, addressing this problem.
Um, we have City Councilor Tim Allen in the room. I don't know, Tim, if you have anything to add or question?
Well, yeah, I, my question, thanks, Sean. Um, thanks for calling the meeting. Hi, Bo Cool. I, I mean, I, I was out of town over the weekend, so I did not see the, the, I just got back last night, so I haven't seen the. Article on this, that was in Sunday's paper, but I did see the article this morning about the impact of. People were working remotely on other things downtown. There, there's a front page article this morning. And, you know, lunch and things like that. So, Bo Cool, I don't know, did you? What, what your state, what your, uh, approach is on this? Did this come from you being overly concerned? Or did somebody in, in going forward, if you're the head of this operation? Um, you know, how much of a concern is it to you? What are you planning to try to get done in the next year? What have you done in your budget planning? That sort of thing. I'd like to just hear from you as to how concerned you are about it and. What you got in place to, have you talked to your board? You know, that sort of thing.
Yes, uh, we have, we have been pursuing, uh, possible assistance, whether it be a grant or. Yearmark funding from the state infrastructure, uh, bill, um, even federal sources because we leased the space. Under the highway that the airspace is owned by the Federal Highway Administration and the, the, the highway itself is Mass DOT's property. I was, uh, during my conversation with the DOT Administrator, um, I was told that since we have been paying lease payments to the. Federal Highway and Mass DOT for about forty years, that we should be eligible for some sort of. Funding from state or federal infrastructure bills. Um, for that, uh, you know, Tim, uh, Sheehan was kind enough with his time. Went to, uh, Congressman Neal's office for some guidance on how to pursue that source. Uh, we were sent to Pioneer Valley Planning Commission to be added to their budget. Uh, and I was told that if we are, if we were added to their budget, we would have support from Congressman's office and others. Uh, to secure some funding, which would be essential for the repairs of these facilities, which is interesting because. We are on the last five years of the lease with the state for ninety-one North and South. Um, I had requested an additional twenty years, uh, but the state indicated that it would have to be a special legislation. For us to get that sort of a long-term extension. So what they suggested was. Uh, four, five-year extensions at a time. So once we reach the end of our five years. Which I think comes up in twenty twenty-six, if we can show some sort of commitment. You know, spending two, four, five million dollars in fixing up some of these beams and the decks are supported. Then they would give us an additional five years and then five years after that. Um, we have been having discussions, uh, Tim knows, uh, we have gone to meetings and, uh, that the issue was. If we go to the banks or, uh, if it's a private or public placement for bond. They look at your gross income less expenses net, and that is how we would essentially pay back our debt. And because of everything that we went through from MGM garage opening, pandemic. Uh, Civic going offline, we, we just don't have any margin to be able to pay back. Um, you know, I would have loved to have taken opportunity to secure five or ten million dollars when the interest rate was two percent. But we just didn't have that flexibility to be able to do that. Um, but we're pursuing everything. We, we have had conversations with the Gaming Commission. The interesting response was, how do you mitigate the problem? They're not interested in funding our deferred maintenance. How do you mitigate it? So that, you know, Tim had mentioned that, you know, adding a revenue source would be mitigating, so they're helping us with that, but. Um, they don't want to just fund our repair needs. They don't want to just send us a check, say, you know, like here, fix your, uh, garages, here is five million dollars.
So just since I asked the question, let me just clarify, um. So you recognize the problem. This wasn't something new to you, obviously. You're sitting there every day. Um, but you don't have a clear answer as to how to, how to get moving forward. Could you just describe, um. Your financial relationship with the city of Springfield? I'm wondering, under the impression that we give money to you each year. Is that true? Is that true?
Uh, we manage the cities on street parking for the city as well as towing operations for the city. So we do, uh, enjoy the revenue stream for managing those. Um, without those, we wouldn't be in business. Um, so yes, because of those, uh, we have conversations with the city time to time to let them know what our situation is financially speaking. Um, but I guess. All right, go ahead. I guess I didn't, I get, I guess I didn't answer your question clearly, what our plans were and how this article came about. Um, you know, the, the founder of Pride Gas Stations, uh, Bob Baldock. As you know, uh, is purchasing, uh, the city state space. He wants to renovate it, create that, uh, a nice cultural hub. For, uh, you know, our, our children in our city and Holyoke and others. But he also said, if I'm going to spend that kind of money to, to activate the space, I need this garage to look first class. You know, it needs to be inviting to the people who are gonna bring their family and children to perform. Uh, so he was showing the space to the Republican, uh, reporter, Jim Kinney. Jim Kinney followed up with me, having seen the, the, the garage in its condition to see what was happening, what the plans were. So that's how this article came about. But this is not new to us. We know it. The board knows it. We've been exploring options for several years.
And, uh, do, do you, do you have an annual report or an annual budget process that? This is becoming part of and when does that take place?
Yes, we have an annual budget, uh, we, we, um. And our budget's been shrinking, uh, you know, several years ago, it used to be close to six million dollars. Now it's two and a half. Um, it's barely hand to mouth, I call it. Uh, whatever we generate, uh, goes into our expenses, you know, some repair, utility bills, admin. Et cetera. We just don't have extra that we can commit for repairs. That's why we have been hoping to find some grants, whether it's local, state or federal.
Uh, thank you. I'm lost for now.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Bo Cool. Thank you, uh, Tim. You know, when we have these meetings here and this, in these subcommittees, we want to make them as constructive as possible, uh, that we have some. Uh, significant policy impact, uh, especially on, uh, departments that are struggling. And I think out of this. Uh, this afternoon's meeting, a couple of things that I, I would respectfully suggest to Bo Cool. And, eh, eh, your oversight capacity, uh, uh, Tim, and your working relationship with the parking authority. Uh, number one, I think that we really could utilize some of the talent in the business community and. Ask, uh, for some board members with that finance background, uh, what, from, from the banks, Chamber of Commerce, uh. Uh, especially with debt, that restructuring. Uh, so again, uh, financing is the problem. So we need some experts here, uh, on financing, uh, a- a- and, uh, Springfield has those. Uh, you know, we're home to Mass Mutual. There's, there has to be somebody in the city that's willing to, uh, uh, step in. Uh, uh, on a monthly meeting and, and go over the books and explain to, uh, the parking authority, um. Uh, executives, this might be a good time to restructure, or this is, these are avenues you can explore. So number one. I think we need, uh, a little bit stronger resumes in terms of finance, uh, on the board. Number two, uh, I think you really need to utilize the state delegation a little bit more, uh, uh, the parking authority does. Um, next month, they're voting on, uh, next month, two weeks, a, a fifty billion dollar budget. I mean, with fifty billion dollar budget going through, you need seventeen million dollars and you don't have to request it. I mean, that. There's a disconnect there. Uh, you really need to, uh. Ingratiate yourself a little bit, uh, and, and gain a little bit, um. Uh, perhaps have individuals on the board with the, the political sophistication on Beacon Hill. To recognize that next week and the next two weeks is the time to ask. I mean, if the parking authority is looking for seventeen million dollars. This would be the exact time to ask when they're voting on a fifty billion dollar budget. We might be able to get some funds there. At this late hour, I don't know, but those requests I think should have been made. Third, ARPA would have been a great, uh, opportunity to retire some of this debt, uh. No application was made, no overtures were, were made to the parking authority to, to provide, uh, help. Uh, Tim, if there is any chance for a clawback, you know, obviously, my, I guess my respectful request would be to. Keep the parking authority at the top of your list, uh, because I, I can't think of another organization that, the, the, the ARPA money rather. Other than Water and Sewer where it fits the category, uh, of, of helping out small businesses in pandemic, uh, related. And fourth, public safety, uh, Tim, uh, I don't know. What our inspections here in the city are, are, and we have heard that we have a, a sign off by Desmond Civil Engineers. I believe that's in Boston, but can we just make sure that we don't experience some of the parking garage failures? Uh, due to this deferred maintenance that other communities, notably New York City have. Uh, in wake of the fact that these, uh, electric vehicles are much heavier than previous cars and these. Garages are not designed for these electric vehicles and that the public can be assured that, uh, they park in our garages, that they will be safe. So I thought this was a constructive meeting. Uh, these are tough issues.
Mr. Chair, could I say something?
Absolutely, Maria.
In that list that you have mentioned, I think the most important thing is a financial advisor to forecast. The what-if, you know what I'm saying? Um, uh, uh, it is important to have a financial advisor as well, or not just having a group of people to assist, but a financial. Advisor that will forecast, uh, prevention purpose, you know, um. Um, I will recommend that as part of the group that you had mentioned. Thank you.
Thank you. So I, I, just as a conclusion, it's, you know, uh, this is a tough problem, it's a tough challenge. Uh, it, it's easy to point out wh- what is flawed, but we gotta come up with some construction. Constructive solutions together to, uh, move the parking authority. Uh, with your leadership, Bo Cool and Tim Sheehan forward, uh, for the benefit of the citizens of Springfield and the benefit, uh, of, uh. The economic development, uh, attributes that, uh, it's the foundation of, of our, uh, business life here in the city of Springfield and our downtown. So thank you so much for, uh, your time. Thanks for enlightening the city council and, uh, thank you for serving on the parking authority and taking on this challenge.
I, 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 I wanted to just very quickly add, I apologize, it had escaped my mind, but, uh. Representative Carlos Gonzalez had come to see us several months ago, almost a year ago. And, uh, I had explained our situation and requested a meeting, shared our financial statements. Uh, but, um, you know, there was not much traction there. Uh, but that was the only thing I had done in terms of state delegates, just wanted to add that. Thank you so much for your time.
Well, we look forward to, uh, continuing the conversation, Bo Cool, and, uh, and we're here to help. Well, we look forward to, uh, continue the conversation, Bo Cool, and, uh, and we're here to help, uh, you tackle this, this challenge here. Thank you all. This concludes the meeting.